Good evening. The Cypress-Ferbanks Independent School District is now convened in a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, October 4th, 2018 at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Cypress-Ferbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center located at 10-300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, October 8th, 2018 regular board meeting, agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress-Ferbanks Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make the day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a meeting, a public meeting of the Board of Trustees and not a meeting of the public. Prior to this agenda, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items would not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 to 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV Online on the district website. They will be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in solid mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress-Ferbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee members who are in attendance this evening, and I see Ms. Julie Heineman. Hello, Julie. We'll now go to the recognition portion of our agenda. Tonight, 1A, the Board will recognize the One Million Project Foundation for donating 1,500 tablets and Internet connectivity to the Cypress Park High School students. Ms. Gordon.
Good evening, Dr. Ogletree, Board members, and Dr. Henry. Tonight, I have the privilege to cheer about incredible people who are making great things happen in Cyfair ISD. To start, I'll mention a devoted educator. Breann Neal, CyPark High School instructional coach, recognized many of her students lacked access to high-speed reliable Internet service beyond the classroom, which would help them to fulfill their academic potential and realize the CFISD mission of becoming 21st century global leaders. Neal reached out to the One Million Project Foundation. The One Million Project's foundation mission is to provide 1 million high school students with mobile devices and free high-speed Internet access because the project understands that potential is everywhere and students want to grow, achieve, and excel. But as many as 5 million school-aged kids don't have Internet access at home. To help close this digital opportunity gap, the One Million Project selected CyPark students as recipients of their generous grant. Over the next few years, 1,500 qualifying CyPark students will be gifted eight-inch tablets with reliable high-speed Internet service and content filters from Sprint. Administrators and other participating school districts report increased student attendance, higher homework completion rates, and improvement in students' attitude toward learning. Cyfair ISD is grateful for the generosity and vision of the One Million Project, not just for the tangible gift of digital tools valued at $540,000 in this school year alone, but for the greater gift of turning potential into opportunity afforded by connectivity. Cyfair ISD thanks the One Million Project for your generous gift.
Thank you. Thank you, One Million Project Foundation. Appreciate that. Yes.
Just a couple of words I want to add. You know, as a lifelong educator, I can't thank you enough for the gift. You've literally, you know, very seldom in life can you talk about times where children's lives are changed, but your generous gift to our students is going to change a lot of lives who have not had that Internet connectivity or the hardware. So, on behalf of this whole community, thank you so much for your very generous gift and choosing us to partner with you. So, thank you very much.
We'll now go to item 1B. On Monday evening, the Board will recognize campuses who earned all possible distinction designations in the state accountability system. 1C will also be on Monday. The superintendent's honors and achievements will be presented on Monday. Going to action items, the consensus items. 6A, the Board will consider approving the tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress-Ferbanks ISD. Any questions? 6B, the Board will consider approving the minutes of the September 10th, 2018 regular board meeting. We'll now go to the non-consensus action items. 7A, the Board will consider awarding bids and contracts and authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. There are, one, cosmetology equipment and supplies, equat cue and read and write software, HVAC air filters, HVAC electric motors, school security assessment and crisis emergency preparedness consulting services, security badges and printing supplies, window coverings. Seven, oh, can we move that to consensus?
John, can I ask?
Yes.
I'm not really certain who this goes to, but for our cosmetology, and I am a strong proponent of that program, even though I don't have anything on top. I do take advantage of it for the ears, however. In Austin recently, there was considerable discussion about decrediting cosmetology courses. Did that die a proper death, or is that still something that Austin, that folks in Austin are pushing?
I have not heard any talk about it.
I know what you're talking about, Tom. There is some discussion of that, but right now I don't think it has moved forward.
Okay.
But I did hear the discussion you're talking about. Dr. O., and I don't want to belabor this either, but I was, Matt, are you out there? Where are, Matt? I had asked Matt to comment about one of the items, just briefly. Do you mind touching? Briefly?
Briefly. Okay. The school security and assessment consultant, just wanted to touch, brief you on that. When we did the security committee this summer, and there was a lot of talk about doing metal detectors throughout the district, we decided to be wise to hire a security consultant to come in and review all of our facilities, to tell us of the feasibility of implementing metal detectors or other physical security units. So, we did an RFQ, and we are going to bring in some cult consultants, highly experts, experts in security, some of them counterterrorism, just a broad range and also in education. They're going to go visit our facilities, and they're going to do a full-day assessment of our facilities, meet with the administrators, do some interviews, and make recommendations on physical security measures that we might want to implement, whether it be metal detectors or other technologies. Also, look at how our IT connects to our physical security measures and look at some of the human factors, and they'll be presenting some recommendations for us to move forward.
Just two things to add to that very quickly. Number one, we wanted the community to know that little information so they would know what we are doing moving forward. And then, secondly, the people that we have coming in actually do not provide the equipment that they might recommend. So, these are not vendors that are doing this. This is totally independent group that will make recommendations. So, I thought that was important also.
We'll also look at both the stadiums and the arena as well for security measures.
All right. We still, everything consensus, all right. Item 7B, the Board will consider approving a site lease agreement with Sprintcom, Inc. for the leasing of tower space and attachment antennas and other such equipment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and conditions and execute all documents. Any questions on this item? May we move this to consensus? Item 7C, the Board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from 2014 bond funds to the recommended contractors and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts. And they are, one, the proposal, 2018 Cypress Ridge High School and Walker Elementary School renovations. Two, the 2018 Transportation Center renovations. Want to leave that to Monday? Yes, questions?
And this would either be for Roy or for Matt. First, the bid packages included in here are very self-explanatory, and your recommendation is easy to follow. If you would sketch out what the base proposal is, we're spending a fair amount of money. What is it that we're trying to accomplish? What are the big-ticket areas that we're touching in these? And then, of course, my standard post-Harvey question, did Harvey kiss any of these areas? And if so, is there, are there any steps, any remediation that we need to take regarding the area around these facilities?
At Cypress Ridge, we're adding a culinary lab similar to the one at CyPark, industrial culinary lab. We're also doing all the athletic fields, the track and resurfacing and field events, and we're also replacing the skylights at CyRidge. At Walker, the big-ticket item there is going to be the kitchen renovation, but we're also painting and putting a new carpet in at Walker. As far as the flood question, none of these, none of these facilities were flooded during the Harvey, and none of them are in the 100- or 500-year floodplain. At the transportation centers, the really big-ticket item is we're going to resurface the Falcon Transportation Parking Lot. Other than that, it's some painting, a little bit of fire alarm work, just some minor stuff for the other four centers. And none of the centers were affected by Harvey either.
And it's been announced that, that part of the countywide bond proposal, some of those funds will go in to help redraw the 500- and 100-year maps. I'm sure that y'all will take a look at those when they come out and let us know if any, any of the information changes.
Yes, sir. We will.
Very good. Thank you.
Consensus are, okay. Item 7D, the Board will consider approving and authorizing the superintendent or designate to enter into the miscellaneous professional service contracts related to the following projects. One, Cypress Ridge and Walker Elementary renovations. And two, the Transportation Center renovations. 7E, the Board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. And that's, one, CJA local contracted services, criminal history, that's an add. Two, DBB local employment requirements and restrictions, medical examinations and communicable diseases, that's a revise. Three, DHE local employee standards of contract searches and alcohol drug testing, that's a revise. And four, DI local employee welfare, and this is a deletion. Can we move that to consensus? Seven F, the Board will consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policy. One, BBD local board members training and orientation. Two, FEA local attendance, compulsory attendance, that's a revise. First one was a revise. Can we move that to consensus? 7G, the Board will consider approving and submitting to the Commissioner of Education a request for maximum, maximum class size waiver. Do you have any questions of Ms. Stewart? Yes. Mr. Jackson?
Dr. Stewart, I, the questions that I have for you are all the ones that I gave you before, so you can make certain that you have the information available. Some of it is in our board package, but I think it bears mentioning verbally for anybody who happens to be viewing this session. So, the first question is, have our waivers increased or decreased or stayed the same from last year to this year?
This year, our waivers have significantly decreased from last year. Last year, 36 campuses requested waivers, and this year, 20 campuses are requesting waivers. Last year, we had a total of 253 classes for second, third, fourth, fifth, that those waivers were a part of that group. This year, there are 94. Last year, 352 students were affected by the waivers, meaning 352 students in classes K through four were in classes that had more than 22 students. This year, we've reduced that number to 126.
Very significant reductions, and I for one applaud the reductions. A follow-up question on that, if we take a look at the waivers, do we find that they are concentrated in just four or five schools or in one part of the district? Are there any anomalies of concentration that show up, say, with one school requiring three or more waivers?
There may be one school that's requiring three or more, but there's not a pattern with the schools. They're just all over the district and for a variety of reasons. Some of the waivers may be to, because of not enough classroom space, and those classes, when they're over the 22, it may just be one or two. We don't have really any that's 24. So, out of a fourth-grade group with five classes, there may be two classes that have 23. Sometimes those waivers are because there may be room in other classes, but in October, the principals feel that it's best not to move one student or two students, and those are strong teachers and they're able to provide instruction appropriately.
Thank you. I'm particularly sensitive to this area because when I was a private citizen, I advocated strongly for a change in the state law on class sizes. And it certainly provides a district with financial flexibility, but you also have to trust that the district exercises good stewardship over, over the students and also individual campuses. And I think, once again, this year, the district has done exactly that, Dr. Stewart and Dr. Henry. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Consensus, everyone? Next item is 7H. The Board will consider approving the applications for Air Force Junior ROTC units for Cypress Park and Bridgeland High Schools. Any questions? Consensus? All right. 7I, the Board will consider approving a resolution establishing an audit process for all developed CBE assignments and an audit process for assessments from non-district providers, University of Texas, Texas Tech University, and Avant. Any questions? All right. Consensus? All right. 7J, the Board will consider adopting legislative priorities for the 86th Legislative Session.
Thank you, Dr. Ogletree, trustees. We just want to give you just a brief overview of what we've put together so far this year as we approach the 86th Legislative Session. Most of these on here are repeats from the 85th Legislative Session, so a lot of that doesn't change, and you'll be very familiar with them. But I'm wanting to, Teresa, are you going first or Stewart? Stewart, Stewart's going to talk a little bit about the financial side, and then Teresa will wrap it up with everything else. So, Stewart?
Thank you, Dr. Henry. We have a number of priorities listed under school finance. The first priority is to update the Foundation School Program finance system and restore that share of the formula funding to at least 50% what it was several years ago. And I have identified four areas in that overarching priority to improve school finance, to improve the school finance system, and to address adequacy and equity in the system. Identify additional revenue sources and dedicate those sources solely to public education. The state overly relies on school property value increases to fund the state's entire budget, not just the Foundation School Program. And so, we feel that the state needs to identify new and additional revenue sources, dedicate, and dedicate those sources solely to public education. And specifically, use the property value increases within the school districts to fund, put that back into public education and not every other budget item in the, in the state's budget. And also, to use school district recapture payments solely for public education. The next one is to increase the basic allotment each biennium, or prior to each biennium, and adjust it for inflation and possibly index that to increases in statewide property values. The third one there is update the cost of education index to reflect the current economic conditions prior to the state's biennium. The cost of education index was implemented way back in 1991 to recognize regional cost differences, providing it, the cost differences in providing education to students, and specifically the differences in teacher salaries across the state. So, that obviously needs to be updated. And then, the fourth one there, under that first overarching priority, is to update the funding weights to reflect the cost for children of poverty, bilingual, ESL, career in technology. You know, the state recognizes the fact that it costs more to educate students who are economically disadvantaged or who have limited English skills. And so, that's why the school finance formulas apply a greater funding weight to the students that are in those programs. However, those weights have not been updated for a very long time and do not reflect the current or the real cost to educate those students. The second priority is to provide greater funding for facilities and eliminate the equalization components of each program. And we're talking specifically about the existing debt allotment and the instructional facilities allotment. They've not been updated, those formulas have not been updated since the inception of those programs in 1991. And it provides adequate funding in those destination, fast-growing districts that are continually building new schools to be able to accommodate their student enrollment growth. The, both the EDA and the IFA programs are, the cost of those programs are shared equally by the state and the, and the district in the same way that the Foundation School Program is structured. And so, we're wishing that they would eliminate the equalization programs of these, these programs. If they do that, then we would actually receive benefit from those programs in helping to service our debt that we incur in order to build schools. Remove the penalty for the local optional homestead exemption in the comptroller's property value assignment. And as you, at the September board meeting, you all adopted a resolution to eliminate the funding penalty that exists in the Foundation School Program for districts that offer a locally adopted optional homestead exemption. So, obviously, we want to make sure that that's part of our priorities. The next one is to remove the restrictions on the use of funds that are provided in the Foundation School Program for the special allotments, such as the bilingual and compensatory allotments. There are spending level requirements when we receive those funds from the state. We are required to spend a certain percentage of those funds within those programs, which really is, causes inherent spending inefficiencies. And so, we're proposing that they remove those spending requirements on the receipt of those funds. The next one is to level the playing field with charter schools. Charter schools are state-funded based on the statewide average amount of funding per student for the states, the total number of the state's independent school districts. And in most cases, those charter schools are receiving about $1,000 more per student than the, the school district in which that charter is located. So, we're proposing that the state fund those charter schools either at the same amount per student as the independent school district in which the charter is located, or on, at the average amount per student of the school districts in the county in which that charter school is located. And then, the last one here under school finance is to fund full-day pre-K for qualified students. And as you, as you know, research shows that three- to four-year-olds in pre-K who are kinder-ready were more than, three times more likely to meet the state standard for third-grade reading versus those, those children who weren't. And so, currently, pre-K funded is at 50% for one half-day. So, we're proposing that they fund the full-day pre-K program for all of the qualified students.
Just before we turn, turn it over to Teresa, one other thing that I don't know if we'll include it in here directly, but indirectly, probably the biggest issue- include it in here directly, but indirectly, probably the biggest issue we have currently with our employees is the, I don't know, that health insurance is unaffordable. And we, we are really going to try to lobby on behalf of our employees this session about either making sure the state is providing more funding for TRS, active care, or to provide it to the school districts so that we can increase our funding towards health insurance. But that's, that's, the reason we lose employees right now is healthcare. They love the district, they like being in the district, but we have a hard time holding on to some employees because of healthcare. So that's become our biggest crisis when it comes to, again, retaining quality people.
Okay. On the back of the legislative priority document that you have at your places, you'll see the remaining items that we have recommended to you be included in this session. Assessment and accountability, those three bullets or priorities are very similar to what you've seen in the past. We want to continue to lobby for the elimination of the writing and social studies state assessments and have those aligned with the federal requirements. The elimination of the letter grades, we're all aware of the negative perception that is created with letter grade assignments and the difficulty in helping parents understand that they think it's like the letter grades that students receive on the report cards, but it's a much more complicated and complex accounting system. So return to the accounting rating system of exemplary, recognized, and acceptable. Removal of the expiration date for the individual graduation committees. You may recall in the last session, they did extend that. It does expire in 2019, but we would like to remove that expiration date and continue to provide that opportunity for students to graduate from high school through this process. This is a process that allows students that have been academically successful, earned all of their credits, and are eligible for graduation with the exception of one or more STAR assessments. But there are limits and processes on that individual graduation committee decision-making process. Safety and security, this is a standalone item. We felt that it did require a standalone priority statement. We really are wanting the legislature to consider that even in the funding. You may recall when we presented the Safety and Security Action Plan, we outlined the fiscal impact on Cyfair ISD, and we're ahead of most districts. Since 2011, we have spent, if I may recall, Stewart helped me, $130 million on safety and security alone, and none of that has been state dollars. All of that has either been locally with our budget, with the police department, which I think was, we've expended about $73 million there. We had the $55 million that we allocated in our 2014 bond. We allocated an additional $1 million this budget just to take care of any of the additional security measures we felt we need to put into place. And then we also used Title IV funds this year for our implementation of the mental health intervention teams in order to hire that staff. So definitely feel like that that needs to be addressed in the funding. It's been made pretty clear there will be several bills filed this legislative session focused on safety and security measures, and we would like to ask that that remain in local control. Don't feel that those safety and security measures need to be mandated at a state level because it is very unique and different to each campus, each facility, and the way that it looks. School choice, those priorities are very similar to the ones we had during the 85th Legislative Session. That last bullet is a new one, oppose the expansion of charter schools into high-performing districts. We really feel if we're going to continue with the charter school model, then absolutely the state needs to take into consideration that it is a absolute duplication of effort when they are allowing charter schools to expand and open in high-performing districts like Cypress Fairbanks. So we are making that specific priority be included. Under local control, this one, those items, those are not new. Oppose legislation mandated for the mandation of performance pay for teachers. This is a big discussion right now among our commissioner and many of our state legislators. They've talked about this in the past. And it may work in some districts, but I still feel, and we feel, that this should be a local decision, that the local school districts and local boards should make a decision about how our teachers are compensated, that we create that plan and that structure. Support for local control of the school start date without the use of District of Innovation. Again, we shouldn't have to go and have to have a label that we're doing something innovative just to have control over when we start school. And I think if you did your research on the majority of the school districts that have adopted the Districts of Innovation, 99% of them are probably for school start date. Transparency, same legislative priorities we had last session. Really what we're doing here is playing defense. We're really trying to make certain that bills are not filed or passed that would add additional reporting requirements that become very difficult for the average person to understand. This could be on ballot measures, this could be just reporting requirements on, you know, from the district to post on their district website. There were a number of bills that were filed in the last couple of sessions, but we've been successful in trying to prevent those from passing. Transportation, those two bullets, those are new, but when you have a district our size and you're transporting approximately 80,000 students each day, it does have a significant burden on our budget. And they have not updated those formulas since, what year, Stewart? 1984. So it is definitely something that we feel should be addressed. So we'll take any questions you may have and definitely any input or feedback that you have on the priority statements that we've presented to you.
Ms. Hartley?
Thank you. I, you know, I agree with so many of these bullet points, and I just wanted to highlight the updating the funding weights to reflect the cost of children of poverty, bilingual, ESL, and career in technology. You know, I see this every day. Students who, with, with just a little extra help, can achieve the same scores, grades, as their counterparts who maybe have a more beneficial socioeconomic level. And that, and I see the pre-K, funding the pre-K, I see that every day. My students, my kindergartners, you know, the ones that are in pre-K, they're already above what my students who haven't had it come in with. So I agree with so many of these. I know we do a wonderful job of making sure that all of our families can read the information. I'm hoping or assuming we'll also be putting this out in Spanish.
Yes. Once the board adopts the final version, then we can have that translated in Spanish as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Anyone else? Tom?
The vast majority of these comport not only with what I support, but what I, I know to be accurate. Some of y'all may recall that over four years ago, I had a monologue up here on the board dais about the unintended consequences of aligning performance pay with student performance and the manner in which teachers are compensated. The evidence is rife throughout the education field that it doesn't work. But even if we go into the business world, we look at massive examples where performance pay tends to have individuals make choices which are not necessarily in the best interest of either the company or the people they interact with. The latest one to fall is Wells Fargo Bank. Billions of dollars lost in shareholder value merely because they tied performance pay to actions that had nothing to do with the mission statement. Our mission statement is every child, every day. Very difficult to attach performance pay to that, but clearly, if it, if it happens, it will move us away from our mission statement. We can still have the same mission statement, but you won't have many people following down that path. Obviously, some, some of the others, as it relates to A through F, you know, most parents I talk to who do not have kids currently in school, but who kids have graduated, they like the idea. But a good example where it doesn't work, Sandy Kress, who is very instrumental in No Child Left Behind and believes that, that he is a premier expert in, in school education, was quoted in a Hearst article that unhappily was reprinted in the Houston Chronicle on A through F. And he talked about A and B schools. It's obvious from his statement, he did not know what he was talking about, but he latched on to the label of an A or a B without understanding what it means based on the algorithm as developed by TEA. That in and of itself is enough to do away with the letter grade system. Second anecdotal example, I was talking to somebody who is a banker for Chase, who said he did not want his child going to a school that wasn't rated at least A. Well, he didn't quite understand the, the rating system in and of itself, or the impact on his child with the neighborhood school. It is, the algorithm is a complex algorithm, and certainly that which Commissioner Williams pointed out is more significant. And I think I, I have to support completely the concept of doing away with the letter grades and go back, if we have to have labels, go back to the last set of labels. I have similar comments on all of these, as you might well imagine, but those are the two that struck me as being most significant.
And Dorsey?
Dr. Ogletree, thank you. I would say, Dr. Henry, with your comment about the TRS and supporting additional funding to help our teachers, I think we ought to include that visually, and it ought to be a tenet by itself. I think it's important to our, to our teachers, and I think it would be a great way to show them that we're working on that.
Teresa, recently, in the article in the Chronicle, highlighted that our schools, even though we're graduating the students, that they are not prepared for, for college. And I think the argument in, in the article was if we eliminate standardized tests, then we could actually prepare students and make them, make them college-ready. Does this, what you've put forth here, does this lean in that, that area? Or you say reduce standardized test, testing only to those areas required for federal level, eliminate writing and social studies. Would this put us there where we are doing a better, better job preparing the students? Or do, or is it, is it the test itself? What?
I'm going to ask Ashley to come up, but it's more about the way that domain is calculated and the assumptions people are drawing from that letter grade that is in that domain. So I will let her explain more about the complexity of that calculation, and this is an example of why a letter grade is not representative of our students' readiness for college.
So to answer what I think is the first part of your question, this priority for the legislative session has to do with eliminating the writing and social studies STAR tests. So those are not federally required, the state of Texas requires those. So eliminating those would align the state testing requirements with the federal requirements. Then what was in the Chronicle article was taking one piece of a three-piece domain system. So our current accountability system has three domains. For our high schools within Domain One, there are three pieces. One of those pieces is college and career and military readiness. Within that one piece, there's about seven factors that the state is looking for the graduates to attain. So one of them is a college-ready standard on the SAT, the ACT, or the TSI. Another one could be getting a three on an AP test. Another one is enlistment in the military. So several things that the state considers makes a student college and career-ready. So one of those things, the Chronicle pulled out from our data, and that was college-ready. So what we know in Cyfair, we give all students the SAT in 11th grade. The board continues to approve that. And that's a great thing for our students. So what that data looked at was the last, the ACT. Is that what I said? I said the SAT, the ACT. So what that indicator looks at is the most recent score of students' data. So you have a wide range of data going into those calculations. But as Teresa said, that is one piece of probably a system that has 100 or more components, and that was kind of taking that piece out of context, along with an A or B letter grade. Which really, the campuses were not given an A through F letter grade last year, and the data that the Chronicle was referencing was last year's data. So we really don't have campus letter grades until this year.
Okay. I've heard this before about the high percentage of students that when they go to, even to community colleges, still need remedial work. And so that's, that's why I asked this, where, where do we actually stand? What should we actually be promoting and trying to get, get done in our, in dealing with the legislature?
Well, again, I think it's just the, a lot of, it's not a, I don't know how to say this, a lot of the challenge is in the rules that have been built into the accountability system. They absolutely should be looking at that, but I think the challenging part, which is all of the rules and calculation methods that they're using to come up with that rating for that domain and then a district or campus's overall rating. It's just very complex. And as Ashley pointed out, they're taking one thing in isolation. And then when we talk about college readiness that they were discussing in this article, that again is a test that is given, the ACT, to all 11th graders. They still have another year for all of those students. Now, we have a high percentage that are scoring college-ready. You look at all of our dual credit classes and students that are enrolled at the junior level, we have, we have a large number of students. But then, they have another year. Those that may have not met that target as a junior, they still have another year to meet that target as a senior before they're entering college.
Sure, sure. Christine?
I've got a thought on this. It's, it's, you know, the article and then pulling out that one piece is frustrating to me as a mom who has two people who've just entered college and seeing, a score on a test does not prove that you are ready for college. There's lots of other factors in there. And I applaud our, our increase in getting students to sign up for dual credit and things like that. Those are the, those are a lot of areas that help us get ready for col, or have helped my children get ready for college. There's so many other things, study skills, time management, so many more things than a test. And so I, I appreciate y'all's conversation about this.
And keep in mind that students have to score at college-ready on the TSI or their ACT or SAT in order to enroll in those dual credit courses.
Thank you.
Donna?
Yes.
Teresa, you, you brought up the, the fact about the TSI, and that was not mentioned in that Houston Chronicle order, article. For the viewing public, briefly talk about what the TSI is, and then would you also, and perhaps Dr. Claiborne would address it, whether or not we see any correlation between test scores and socioeconomic standing?
I would be happy to talk about your second question, and I'm going to refer your first question to Mary Jodlosky, who's over curriculum instruction. My area specialty is STAR. My area specialty is STAR. Do we see students' performance align with their economic status? In Cyfair, we're seeing our economically disadvantaged student scores moving up. We presented that data to the board at the last board meeting. So yes, we're seeing our economically disadvantaged students catch up with our kind of all-student group. So I can't say that every economically disadvantaged student has a low score because that's not true. They have high scores as well.
However, I think if we take a look at the data, we will find that the test scores on average for our non-Title I kids will be higher than the average for our Title I kids. A phenomenon, and it's a, a fact that I've mentioned before, but I'll mention it again since we're talking about this. I, like Darcy, we're both on the chancellor's counsel. When our chancellor was, first came on board, he railed against high schools sending the university in Austin children who are not prepared for college. I wrote a strongly worded letter to him the second year, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. The university came out with a slightly different view. They took a look at the statistics, and they found that the non-Title I students graduated at a rate five times that of the Title I students despite relatively equal or identical test scores and grades. So college readiness and the ability to attend college and to actually graduate is, is more than just a test score, it's more than just a letter grade. And that's something else that this article missed. Clearly, there is a big difference between the test scores, say, of our high schools. We can rank our high schools based on socioeconomics and demographics, and we will in fact see a difference in test scores. Doesn't mean the kids aren't capable, but if the neighborhood happens to have a higher crime rate, certainly it's more difficult to prepare for a test or to take a test. And that's the point that I'm attempting to make. I'm not trying to suggest that we don't do a good job bringing our children up who are Title I students up to perform more at a par. But I think my statistics are very sound that the non-Title I students have average higher test scores, just like at the university I attended, the non-Title I's will graduate five times the rate as our Title I kids.
I would agree. When you view the data in the aggregate, that is correct.
Thank you.
The TSI is another me, a test that measures college readiness. It's very similar to SAT and ACT. It's typically used by junior colleges and community colleges. It's less expensive, it's online, it's easily accessible by students, and it's quick, quick turnaround on the scoring.
And the TSI is in fact considered to be a measure of college readiness.
Absolutely, sir, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, consensus with that?
Just, just one, one statistic I, I want to add to that, and this was the prestigious university that you attended, Mr. Jackson, Ms. Mungoya. They did a study this summer that showed that high school students who had dual-credit, when they arrived at university, were three times more likely to graduate in four years. So it's a, the, the, the college academy and the dual-credit and the AP are all helping our students succeed at the college level.
Great, great. Our superintendent's briefing will be on Monday night, and we have come to the end of our agenda tonight. We will see you Monday. Lloyd Will.